The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer of 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, October 14th, 2021.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Do we have anybody here for the invitation? (inaudible) President.
Councilman Flankis?
Here.
Councilman Carson?
Here.
Councilman Spear?
Here.
Councilman Alwyn?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams Harper?
Present.
City Clerk Lee?
Here.
City Treasurer, HR Director Trask? City Attorney Kaboo?
Here.
Public Court Supervisor Kretra?
Here.
City Engineer Alberg?
Here.
City Fire Chief Stork?
Here.
And that's all.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item two, public comment. Please state your names to the record. You only have three minutes.
My name is Renee Harshman. I'm here for white pipe construction. My concern is the building department. We're in the process of building a home. We're in this last three, four different phases. I asked them for an inspection for next Thursday, and I was informed our inspector is not going to be available. And this will cause great havoc for my guy who owns the house place and my subcontractors. So I would like to know what you guys want to do about it because the inspector is going to be gone for 10 days or so. And I need this inspection to be done because all my subcontractors are at.
You're winter.
All my subcontractors are scheduled. I have my installations this week, and then I have my drywallers. And I can't always reschedule them because we're going into winter. The owner of the property would love to be moved in by December, which needs scheduling. But now since we don't have a real building inspector, I don't know what to do. So I'm asking, can I take pictures since he's not going to be around to do the mailing inspection for my drywall? Or do I tell my owner that, hey, we're delayed again, and you might not be able to move in for next year? So I'm asking you guys to answer. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Just when I heard that item seven one here considered possible mandatory, but I should have decided it should be dismissed. Years ago, there was an attempt to mandate mandatory pickup of citizens from all the county, including the city of Ely, filed a lawsuit that went all the way to spring court. County lost the suit and had to pay back $180,000 to the residents. We don't need to do that again. There was a concern brought up at utility board this morning, October 14th, about the so-called trash short storage by some people. If that is being done, then your enforcement officials need to move to correct that. The city has no business punishing all residents because of water lorm individuals not taking their trash to the landfill. Supposedly, we pay the same monthly fee. There is no excuse to not take the trash to the landfill. The city is paying over half a million dollars just for policing. Their staff's not doing their job. They need some need to go. Mr. Mayor, I request a complete list of all parking permits that the city of Ely and the Nevada Endo has given out to those along Great Basin Boulevard, in particular, in the area of the new courthouse, the jail, sheriff's office, E D Fire Station, Crocker Queen, and Ramada, just to name a few. Recently, the state Endo, the city engineer took away my ability to park vehicles behind the sidewalk on the west side of my property in 710 Avenue G. They stated that I didn't have a permit. At a meeting with three state Endo engineers and your city engineer, Helen, on September 20th, 2021, I then told them they failed to put me to put in a road curving better on the east side of Avenue H of the property and the west side of Avenue G of my property coming out of the Great Basin Boulevard. All the engineers claimed I needed a permit. I went out to tell them to give me an application. I'll go pay for it, and then I will conduct a survey of compliance by others. I also told them again that the new project fails to meet federal ADA access on numerous corners of the new project. And again, they told me I was wrong. You need to look at that, Mr. Mayor. On the west corner of my property on Avenue G in Great Basin, the state has put out a curb to a height of 11 to 12 inches, which is a safety hazard to those that may unknowingly step off thinking that a six-inch depth drop-off is there. The state has created a safety liability for 12 inches off a curb. That's crazy. Mayor, if you look into that, look into that, those that are not compliant and are acting under cover are flawed. They're discriminating against me. I may need to go. Mr. Mayor, once again, I request a complete list of properties and individuals that are allowed to park on some city lots and city streets while living in there.
Thank you for your attention.
I need some answers, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Robinson, do you have any comments?
For public comment?
Yes.
What was that? There's somebody behind you who'd like to make public comment.
Right.
Please state your name for the record. You've got three minutes. I can hear something. It's just very excited. Last time I think it was a lot in that little box there. Sir, we can hear you now. If you'd like to start over. Just a minute. We did just one more. Can we turn this up here? Can you try that again, Luigi?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me now better?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
No volume, mayor.
Luigi, can we have you stop one more time? I'm sorry. They're working on it. Can you say something one more time, Luigi?
Can you hear me okay now?
A little bit better, but still a little soft. If you can speak directly into your mic, it might be better.
Is this better?
It's much better. Go ahead.
Good evening, Councilmember and mayor. This is Luigi Restad, the president of R Plus Energies and the proponent behind the White and Science Project. It's been several months since we've been before the commission or before the city council, and I just wanted to give you a quick update on the progress of the project. Since last time we met, we completed all the field studies for environmental, cultural, biological. It was submitted as part of our EA package to BLM for doing the geotech exploration work. This is only the first phase of geotech work to kind of direct some of the design aspects of the project. We had three bore holes, one up on top of Duck Creek, one mid-mountain on the step side, and the other down lower towards the lower end or near the Condor Substation. We were denied a waiver by Endo to go into the state's winter habits period, which starts November 1st. So our focus has been to focus on bore hole number two, which is halfway up the mountain. You folks may have seen, you see them lights up on the mountain because they're working 24-hour day shift right now, working through the night to drill the bore hole, which is four inches in diameter, down to a depth of 1,900 feet is the goal, and we'll start hopefully with bore hole one, which will be the furthest west hole in the coming week. We do have to complete all work by November 1st, as they described, because they have that. But BLM did this decision to let us go out there and work in the community. Just quick comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
There's a letter sent to the members of the Ely City Council. I am writing to you on behalf of the Committee Against Childings. Thank you for your donation to us. As you may know, our program exists because of donations to us from our community and many volunteers that pack and deliver these food bags each month. We have been amazed as we go along at the tremendous need in our community, and this donation assures that we certainly will continue. Thanks to you all. Our sincere thanks, Deborah Fairman and the Cash Program.
My valus was a frog in your throat, and this is not what I was going to say. I've been inundated with advertising mail to my insurance with the seal of the city of Ely in place of the return address. That is, some of you are kind of half the know. It does not show integrity. It's got the beginnings of a scam. How many other people can use important seals, maybe not as honorable as that of the city of Ely that's been years to lead people, oh, my gosh, I gotta do this because it's official? That's misrepresentation, and I object to it. I'm not just an old woman. Well, I am an old woman. I used to be an honorable journalist. I covered crime in California that would have made your blood run cold, and it did many people. So I know when I see the makings of a misleading remark or picture. And Ely deserves better than to have the seal of the city of Ely on that worth as much as sale insurance. It doesn't matter what product you're pushing. You are a city. You represent good government, not getting people to buy something for a company that they have hired. I find it disgraceful to the city of Ely. I know what crime is. I know what bloody murder crime is. And I know what sneaky little hidden notes here and there and scams can do to mislead people. I wasn't dumb enough to go out and buy insurance because a company should be responsible enough to be careful of what they tear up in the city, including people's property. But there was a lot of more. I'm not going to go past my time. But I think it is beneath the integrity and honorability of this city council than any other government organization that would use their seal to encourage people to buy insurance or any other product that was not dealing with the government. The destruction is, I realize.
Ma'am, that's your three minutes. That's your three minutes. The alarm was just your three minutes.
You keepin' me my three minutes?
That's your three.
True, so basically, you're a good man. You must be the best. Shut my mouth that quick. But you're too good. You're better than to use the city of Ely's seal on promotions and financial promotion.
Any other public comment? Please.
Hi, guys. This is Cecilia. I live off 21 on One South Street. I live in the middle of the cemetery where my dad built my knee. The problem is, the cemetery, the way they're creating it right now, you guys have already fixed my road about two years ago. And there's only one road in my house. I'm in the one house in there. But the way they're creating it, the water's coming down again and ruining the road again. How do I address that?
What was your address?
21 on One South Street. It's literally the only house in the cemetery. Yeah, I'm on both. I, yeah. So, yeah, I know it's unintentional. It's not malicious, but the drainage is ruining the road again. So my question is, how do I address this?
We can't provide you any answers here. This is public comment.
Please help me hold myself.
Please reach out and contact us through the website. We can talk to you. Thank you.
Please.
Any other public comment? Here we are. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move on to item three. Mayor discretion for possible action. Approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. All of the things on that. A blue to approve, motion to approve, count incarceration. Have a second? Second from Councilman Flankis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here we go. So ordered. Item four, city department reports. We'll start with the fire chief.
On the paramedic call, there's three administrations of fentanyl. How did you guys resupply your reading for it?
We were at the pharmacy at the hospital, and it comes in there, checked into the pharmacist. They maintain control of it, and we go get it, and it goes locked into our lock safe.
So you have an inventory you have to show that you use?
Yeah. So in our protocol, if you look at it, so I'll give you an example. Just the other day, we had a call right at your elderly male fell injured his hip. So we drew up 100 micrograms of fentanyl. We only administered 50 of it. So when we get to the hospital, we let them know that, hey, this is all we administered. With the protocol the way it's set up, if he takes fentanyl, and which now our advanced EMTs are going to be able to be given this. And then you get with the nurse. The nurse verified that you go to the sink. You waste the other 50 micrograms. She signs the document. And then the other EMT who's on the ambulance also signed the document. So it's double verified that that other portion has been wasted, and the one portion is tracked to be an imputation.
Do they, this is all DEA rules? Do they resupply you right then?
No, we have a stop in our medication safe.
Please, Steve.
Good afternoon, mayor.
There you go. Thanks, guys. Municipal court, Deb? City clerk?
I'm pleased to report that GOED did accept Nevada River Water's income surveys for the Parker Stevens Sewer Grade Project and the Bell Avenue Water Pipeline Project. So I submitted both of those for eligibility consideration yesterday, and hopefully they'll pass. We can complete the application later this year.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk? City public work supervisor? City water operator, you have that report. City engineer?
We've been, we were requested for to look at some possible improvements, infrastructure improvements for funding.
Okay. I'm doing the engineer's report right now. Yeah, do you want me to flip it around so you can watch?
If you're on the Zoom call, could you please mute yourself? We can hear you in the room. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, for some of our hard funding, we were requested to look at some improvements, some infrastructure improvement projects. And so I met with Mike and some of the city staff and looked at some of our projects. And one of the things that I'm looking at with projects, even with Mike, we looked at projects that are outside of our many priorities that we already have this quarter. And so what we were doing, we're looking at situations where issues that causes a lot of maintenance or obviously on Mack repair, so we got a list together. We'll be compiling costs, so we should get back to you guys. I had a meeting a while back with the mine and the county, and unfortunately, through that meeting, the meeting was discussing the golf course, putting their own irrigation well in. And the information that came back from that was presently, to be able to drill a well down there to use for their purposes, the costs were extremely extravagant. And so, you know, everybody kind of believed it is based on, you know, today's day and age with supply shortages, and different things are going on. They just seem to be very high. So the mine provided information back to the county because those are prices that the mine have actually received and obtained through their own pillars that they have up there regularly on their site. And so they actually pass information on. They believe the county is looking at possibly directing to release some local pillars to look at that, maybe those costs will come down and be something they can do at this point in time. Unfortunately, it wasn't appeared until next summer, and it will be on the road. Another thing is Jennifer asked, as a part of our negotiation with RMC, to compile some water usage and everything else. And so I'm in the process of compiling that. I'm waiting for some information to come back from RMC from their quarterly reports that I can add into that. Along that same lines, I also had a conversation this afternoon with Alan, who is a hydrologist that's assisting us on some of the services. Alan had me clarify a few things for him. He also needed to give some information that he can give to us. Currently, we're, the Oskated guy is coming in town, and he's hooking up Oskated Terrace Well. It's missing a replace situation, so there's a replace which would need to be put in there for turning on this pump so it can run auto. We're anticipating coming back to town, but we need to take care of that, and then go back and take care of. Our desire, our goal is to actually, our water usage is down, so we want it to terrace well. Hold it there, and then we can do, we can do, we can give it a rest, and then we can, well, we can rest. We'll give it a, we'll give it a rest a little while. And then I'm just about finished completing some stuff. We're requesting a look at the long-term viability of the cemetery and why it's been up, and so we just don't compile that. I'll be back after you guys.
Any questions? Good evening.
I don't think the speakers moving.
I don't think they are either.
Can anybody hear me on the speaker?
No.
Yeah, that's not working. Let's get this thing fixed once and for all or throw it out the door.
I don't think anything's coming out of the speakers from the people. Any questions for the city engineer?
Can you fix the speakers?
I'll put on my list.
We'll get a native phone from the cheerleaders. Should have had this thing tested before we started this meeting.
It worked just morning.
Check morning. Check morning.
I mean, we have to, we have to do it this morning.
This does continue, Mr. Mayor. We'll just talk louder. We'll be here all night when you can get this thing fixed.
I'd agree with that. So we'll move on to, I'll turn the gavel over to Mayor Portemblay. Sorry for Friday's vibe.
We have a report from the Northern Railroad Foundation.
Good afternoon, everyone. We have had a pretty incredible month. The biggest news is we found out late last night that our $10 million snippily grant to open up the track that we build is approved. And funding is supposed to be available come December, January. So that, of course, will change just about everything that we do down there. We're very, very excited by that. We have been working at Field Depot now for about 15 years, so this will finish it, open up the track, and actually make a major impact on the Joe's economy, as well as bring increased tourism into the community. So we're very excited about that. The other big news is we finished locomotive 81. It's out the door. It's running. We had worked out there is a publication called Trains Magazine. They are like the railroad magazine in the country, and their 80th anniversary was last year, the year COVID. And so they canceled all the anniversary activities. And since we were going to finish 81, I suggested to them that they celebrate their 81st anniversary here in Ely. And they did. And so we have our Trains 81, our 81, and it was very well intended. And Locomotive 81 is doing everything that we expected to do. And then the other big news, too, is two of our original locomotives, locomotive 201 and 401. 201 was purchased by Kenica in 1951, and 401 was purchased by Nevada River in 1952, and they both left in 1983. The two different owners have offered them back to us. And so we're really excited by this. This is, you know, these are, on locomotive 201, only 38 of them were made, and all the others have been scrapped. And on locomotive 401, that was the only diesel locomotive that Nevada River had purchased, brand new. And they did a very special paint scheme on it called Desert Morbona. And after it left here, it wound up in Delta, Utah, and they never changed the paint scheme. So it's still in its original paint scheme from 1952. And so both locomotives have been offered to us, and we're raising money to bring them home. So, and so far, we're about 45% of what we need to raise. So pretty exciting times down there. So, ma'am, you have any questions at all? All right. Thank you all very much.
With that, we'll move on to item six, city reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Don't hear this stuff.
Councilman Alwyn.
First report that I attended the commission meeting, listened to Luigi on his presentation, which he covers everywhere. Also threw it in front of you, a picture. People need to really understand the magnitude of this project, the bore holes are going to drill down on top of the summit, down through the side of the mountain, up to where the turbines are going to be, 90 feet below the surface. That diameter is 24 feet in diameter. So I give you all a picture of Duck and Mountain. When they done there, that's a 25-foot diameter. It's huge. So please digest what this is about to do to our area. Just really start attending, paying attention. The holes are, the drill he's talking about on S12 B2, it's just going back in 1,961 feet, I believe. And yesterday, there were 700 some feet into there. So just imagine a 24-foot diameter cavern, per se, going in there. Plus, when they get on top of the mountain and drill down, again, Duck and Mountain had it on train track drilling. I don't know how they're going to get the train. I'm probably going to run the peacock to do this, but this thing is huge. That's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Alden. Councilman Speaker. Councilman Carsky? Not at this time. Councilman Flankis?
Not at this time.
Yes.